Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I guess the first thing I should do is withdraw my previous amendment on page seven, line seven.
Okay. On that amendment, to withdraw and objections, so ordered. And Senator, you may proceed with your new amendment.
Yes, so the new amendment, Madam Speaker, is to now strike from line six, the word beginning "the," the training, up to the end of that sentence, or strike that out in its entirety?
Oh, no.
Because I'm going to offer this amendment to put it on.
No, no, but you can put it on the top.
Yes.
But no, that's fine there, that can stay there, it's on the top.
No, this-
Which is the curriculum.
No, this now would change, right?
Huh?
Would have to delete this, and then add this amendment we have to the top.
Okay. All right, so then you're saying to delete, then instead, after the word "basis" on line six to eight, is to delete that, okay, to delete that entire-
That sentence, yes.
Sentence. Okay, on that deletion, no objections, so ordered, okay, and then your new amendment.
The new amendment, Madam Speaker, is now what we have before us. The language should read, "The training shall also include practical experience with individuals with special needs." And that now, Madam Speaker, if we can insert that line three of the same page.
On page, yeah, same page, but on line three, after "training," that-
And then add this amendment, the training.
Okay.
So it shall read from the top of that page, "Collaboration with Guam Community College and/or the University of Guam to supplement any existing programs or in-service training," period. "The training shall also include practical experience with individuals with special needs."
Okay, so, yes, okay, so-
Yeah, and so, Madam Speaker, it just, I think it's consistent with our discussions earlier, and what the Vice Speaker had articulated for me, and what the intent was, is that when we do have these trainings for our first responders, that they do have, you know, to get a real hands-on experience, that they do have individuals with special needs part of that curriculum.
Okay, on the amendments, anyone like to speak on the amendment? None, so no objections, so ordered. Thank you very much, Senator. On the main motion, let me see where did we leave off. Senator Blas, your recognition.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I once again, and I want to acknowledge the passion and the work that the mover of this legislation has, and I want to preface what I'm going to be, what I'm going to be saying here, by saying, I see the value in being, in the effort, to be able to do more, and at least prepare more, and do the efforts necessary to be able to ensure that in times of disaster, in times of emergency, that we can do more, we can do better in our response to individuals with special needs, or individuals, persons with disabilities. That said, Madam Speaker, I have some major concerns and major issues with the bill that's before us, and I'd like to take this opportunity to be able to address some of these concerns, and hopefully through discourse and dialogue, can gain a better understanding, and we can probably look at making this bill better.
Please proceed.
Thank you. First off, Madam Mr. Speaker, it was brought to my attention as to whether or not, in the title itself, are we truly and properly addressing the population of individuals that we want to be able to assist, in identifying them as individuals, or individuals with special needs, or is this supposed to be persons with disabilities? Okay, so I think that if I can ask the author of the bill to yield to that question.
Senator, you yield.
Then, what it would do is that I would, it would allow me with a special medical need to enter into the registry, so that if something happens, then they would be able to access that information and better meet my needs. That's why it changed to individuals with special needs, to be inclusive of those with disabilities.
And I thank you, I thank you for that answer. Mr. Speaker, though I need to caution, I need to bring up, we do have certain mandates, we do have certain provisions, we have, you know, that basically address a number of our programs for individuals with disabilities, and I just don't want how to somehow cause, as a result of this, now cause a, well, I don't know, it's going to cause a new category, more confusion, you know, because in one side, we have a program for individuals with disabilities, and now we have another one, we have, now we have a program, we're looking at a program here for individuals with special needs. And I bring this up because, right off the top of my head, I mean, I'm thinking of, you know, again, you know, the parking, you know, the accessibility to, into buildings, the ingress and egress. There's a number of different mandated and government programs, community programs, that specific, are addressed specifically for individuals with disabilities, and now we have an individual with special needs, and so there may be some concern and issue with regards to whether or not this is going to get, it's going to get confusing. I bring that up as a concern, although, you know, based on the author, unless she wants to be able to change it, you know, that would be up to her. The next issue that I got is the, is actually, and I know she had put this on, and she had talked about this earlier, was the use of online registry. And I'm a little concerned with this, because when you use the word "online registry," you basically, there's, there's an accessibility question, concern, an issue that's brought there, okay? And, you know, as to whether or not, who's got access, who's got accessibility to this? Who's got access to this information? How can this information, is this information going to be inputted? What's the infrastructure that's going to be used to be, to put this, to put this information on what, how is this, how is this infrastructure going to meet all the requirements necessary to protect this information? Because there's another concern that I have here with regards to the confidential information. So I bring this as another concern that I have here, and is it truly necessary, I mean, that it's going to be an online registry? Online registry basically means, again, even if we don't use the word "online," and we do use that technology, there's nothing to say we can't, but this seems to basically infer that this is the only place it's going to be. And then we run into issues with regards to, again, the confidentiality and the repository of the information, which is not addressed in the bill. The next issue that I have, and this was an issue, and this was a concern that was brought up, actually, before I get to that, I want to go to page three. Page three, line 12, okay, and this basically, it is, it basically helps to define what confidential information is, and page three, line 13, actually says, "D is protected, health information as defined by the Health Insurance Portability Accountability Act." Is this bill, is this process, is this mechanism that we're looking at, at being able to employ, is this going to conform now with all the changes into it, now with what we're doing to this? Is this still going to be in conformance with HIPAA requirements? As I had mentioned to you earlier, I don't see how that is going to be, going to be accomplished when we had this whole discussion this morning about how the information is going to be I don't know if law enforcement broadcasting, okay, which is accessible through online and through scanners, if there is those protection clauses in there. And so, when we're, when we're thinking about this, we've got to think about whether or not those meet those standards. And I venture to say that public broadcasting, which is basically what it is, okay, and to basically answer a question, and to answer, yeah, answer a question of one of the issues that were brought up earlier, when the dispatcher calls for ambulance number one, guess what? Ambulance number two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13 hear the same thing. So no, it is not privileged in conversation. And then when they're there, when they're there, are we now going to cause the responding departments to mute their headsets or their speakers, to get away from the process of being able to lower down while they're out on the field, or while they're at the scene, that they can't hear the broadcast because of the dissemination of this information? I venture to say, Mr. Speaker, that does, that does not conform to the HIPAA requirements. And I bring that up because, and I'll get to that a little later on. Now I want to move on to page four, and this is a question that was asked earlier, and I don't think there was, there was truly a response that was given. Page four, starting from line one to basically line five, five. You know, there's two definitions, one for a certified first responder, and one for a community first responder. What is, what relevance does that putting it there have to do with the bill? Why do we differentiate, and why do we, why do we define these things, why these two I know the question was asked earlier, but I don't think it was truly answered. And a question that I would like to pose, and hopefully the author can yield, and basically answer, why the difference, and why the necessity? Mr. Speaker, can she answer?
Mr. Speaker, I yield to the question.
Please.
Mr. Speaker, again, when we looked over the definition of the first responders, this was actually, where we had gotten this was Wikipedia, and in that, there were different types of responders that were defined, and so, in that event, that, we don't need to include those two, but there are different responders as defined, and so we just actually included that, in case a certified responder, somebody wanted, you know, wanted to know what that is, it's someone who has received certification for, to provide pre-hospital care in a certain jurisdiction, a community first responder, it can also be defined as a person who is dispatched to attend medical emergencies. Those were all the different types of descriptions and definitions. So we included it, we can delete it, but it was, we thought that we would just clarify, basically, the different ways that responders are defined.
I think, Mr. Speaker, that actually, it provides a little bit more confusion to an issue already, what was been provided as the, as the definition for first responder, which is provided on page three, as an employee of an emergency service who is likely to be among the first people to arrive, first positively, group police, firefighters, paramedics, and emergency medical technicians. I know, and I recognize that there is such thing as Good Samaritans, and there's such thing as volunteers, and maybe there's another, but I just don't see how this fits there. I, you know, I venture to say, Mr. Speaker, that I would like to make, be moved to be able to delete this, this sentence, or these two sentences here, but then, it has to go back and, you know, help to define who truly is the first responder. This is a little bit too confusing here. So I moved to, I moved to strike that.
Right, there's a motion to delete those two sentences. Any other Senator wish to be heard on it? The sponsor has no objection to the deletion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So, Mr. Speaker, I'm going to go down then to the same page, and this is actually in the, basically, the definition of the registry, and it says, "The registry shall only contain information voluntarily disclosed by a registered individual with special needs, or his or her parent, relative, or guardian. Such information may include, but not limited to, emergency contact information, relevant medical information, history, and a description of any special need deemed relevant by the registrant. All information within this registry shall be deemed confidential information that shall only be used for the purpose of the registry." Now here's where it's confusing. "Any other disclosure may occur only upon the written authorization of the registrant." Can we get an explanation as to why that's there? And when is that going to be used?
Senator, you wish to yield?
I yield to the question, Mr. Speaker. If there is, for example, somebody who had wanted to use parts of the information for statistical purposes, then they would have, the individuals who had provided information there would have to provide authorization for the use of that information for that specific purpose. So all we're saying is that to protect this, at any time that information may be used, you know, someone may want to use it, may not even disclose the names of the individuals who are part of this registry, but just want to collect the data for research purposes, or to monitor, or to evaluate the effectiveness of this system, then we're saying that we really want to protect that information, that this, that the individuals would have to give permission, that their information, the data there can be used for those purposes. But they would have to disclose what, in asking for permission, how the information will be used.
Mr. Speaker, your facial expression is a reflection of, basically, you know, my understanding of the answer. You know, we're talking about emergency situations, okay? First off, I understand all of this information is voluntary, but then there's going to be a clause here. And so then now, we're going to get difficult as to, okay, what can and what can we not You know, all information is relevant. And so, but then, we get into an issue here, you know, with regards to, all right, so what information can we provide? And oh, by the way, before I can get to having this discussion, before I need to have somebody sign this, you don't have time to do that in an emergency situation.
I think the example that was used by the Senator was what I was having from, I didn't realize any of this information was going to be used for statistical purposes for anybody asking for, that was the only reason why my one I went up. I think this was a registry for providing services, not a registry for somebody's research project.
And when you're doing that, Mr. Speaker, and you're going to start to have to evaluate the program, so then how do we, how do we differentiate that? So what are we going to do in this quarterly report? Go back to all these people and ask them, can we, can this information be provided? The rest of the world already knows about it. Again, a concern, I don't know how, you know, as far as what's going to be necessary to be able to, you know, language necessary to delete or amend, but it goes more to, again, to the concern that I have with regards to, Bill, I'd like to be able to move, to continue and move forward.
Please, continue.
The next area we actually have is actually page seven. Again, it brings up an issue, the concern that I have earlier. The whole discussion with regards to the training, I'm glad there's a training component in this thing. You know, if there is anything about this whole bill that I love is basically the training component, is, in some cases, can be regarded as the sensitivity training or the awareness And maybe my suggestion would be here, and as far as this bill is concerned, is, I understand the creation of a registry for emergency management, that could be a whole other discussion. So that in preparation in times of a typhoon, in cases where we do have time to be able to respond in a more orderly fashion, that we do have this information, so that we can make those informed decisions. And then when it comes to the emergency, the true emergency response out there, when, you know, when there is really no time to be able to prepare for it, other than you're going to have to respond to it, is giving the officers, giving the first responders the training to be able to, not just to recognize, but how to deal with it? I love that part. And quite honestly, if this bill was just so that we do create, there is that registry that is going to be created for emergency management purposes, but also, more importantly, before we move on to the next step, is being able to have the sensitivity training, or the training necessary to be able to deal with it, and then from there, we start to look at how we can build on this? This will make it a great bill. But I respect, I respect, you know, the author of the bill. Because I know that if I take out that whole component, that's not what she wanted. Because then if you go down to page seven, and one of the things that we were talking about, that we labored about before we went to lunch, and after lunch, was the whole training aspect of this thing. I would tell, Mr. Speaker, first off, $150,000 that it talks about here, and as far as the appropriation, what's that for? Where did that, where did that figure come from? What do we peg this money to? I mean, where did this come from? What's this going to pay for, what is $150,000 going to pay for?
Do you wish the sponsor to-
Yes, I'd like to know. What is it going to, I mean, $150,000?
Senator, you wish to yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I yield to the question. So basically, we had included here that there, the registrants can also participate in the national registry, and that national registry, the cost for that is $20 per participant. So what we have done was actually estimated what the startup cost may be, based on, you know, based on that, that cost for registering in the national registry. So we had 2,000 students that are currently enrolled within the Guam Public School System, who are receiving special education services. So we estimated that, let's say, 100% of them would voluntarily participate, or the parents would participate, then that would be $20 times 2,000, which would-
Forty thousand.
Yeah, 40,000. And then we also have adults, right? But the rest, the startup, the startup registry would be to get the consulting services that would be needed in order to create the program for this registry. So part of that would be that, we, part of it would also be, just one more, please. Part of it would be to allow for the registry in the national registry, and then part of it would be to do the outreach, so that we actually inform those who may need to register, or would like to know about the program. So it's all incorporated. We have not, you know, I, I will tell you that this is the best estimate that we could, that we could come up with. It may be less than that, but it's a startup.
Again, I want to raise the concern with regards, okay, we just, in an earlier amendment that we made, doing as far as the training, we expanded that, okay? We expanded that training because in earlier, it earlier read that the only ones that were going to receive the training were personnel from the fire department. Now it's, we're first responders throughout the island. This is a mandated training. So you take the mandated training, plus then the creation of the registrar, plus then the, just first I've heard of it, we're going to be hiring now a consultant. Okay? And then the enrollment, or the, I guess, the registration fee for a certain amount, number of individuals. I'm still not sure. And so, you know- And so, you know, it was one thing to be able to talk about the funding source. It's, now it's the amount. It's the amount that's going to be necessary in this thing. And maybe this can be better provided by using this, again, I'm going to go back to what would make me very comfortable with the bill is basically, you know, the study that's necessary and the training, so that we do recognize then what our needs are going to be down the road. Because I venture to say there's going to be infrastructure improvements that are going to be necessary. There's going to be equipment, there's going to be, this is online, there's going to be computers, there's going to, there's going to be a secured server, there's going to be HIPAA requirements, that's going to require. So, you know, I can do this one of two ways, Mr. Speaker, but I think I want to do it more of a respect the protocol. Is providing and providing, using my time as the opportunity to be able to express the concerns that I have, you know, with the bill, what I would, what would make me feel comfortable about supporting it? You know, because yes, I agree. I totally agree, from the get-go. Registry is great. Okay, so that we can, we do have this, emergency management does have this tool to be able to respond more effectively, quicker, more effectively, to those, to the individuals with special needs. But it's the implementation of this that I have major concerns and problems. And I don't want to be one that's going to stand here, I'm going to strike this, strike that, and come up with basically a two, one or two-page bill. No, I would like to be able to work with the author of this thing, because I see the value in this. If the, but other than that, I cannot. And I'm sure many other of my colleagues have got similar concerns. So I, you know, again, $150,000, that will go a long way if we put together the training component of this thing, so we can start to do the initial study on this. So we can truly understand what is going to be necessary, how we're going to be able to deal with the different requirements. But even when doing the study is creating, is nothing to stop them now from creating the registry. I just finished looking through on the computer, just Google emergency response for individuals with special needs. There's a number of templates that are there. It's a great tool to have. It's just that the implementation and how it's supposed to be utilized, the response, what the officers, the responders are required to do now, that's problematic. So for the sake of moving this discussion along, you know, I may, remember where I can, where I didn't think it was going to majorly change the whole thing, you know, I'm pleading, I'm begging, please, that we find a way to be able to make sure that the registry does come into existence, the training does happen, and we start the process of how we're going to be able to implement it in times of emergencies where we don't have time to prepare for it. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the main motion, any other senator wish to be heard? On the main motion, any other senator wish to be heard? Senator Espaldón?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I may have stepped out, but I know there was some concern about the issue of the definition of confidential information, and it was brought up, and I was wondering if I just might be able to query or pose a question to the author. And again, under, on page three, under definitions, under AC, confidential information is commonly regarded as confidential in the healthcare industry. And having come from a family of doctors, I know that that's very personal, nothing is released, we don't even talk about anything, we've never talked about anything over the table and whatnot. So again, going back to the concerns raised by previous speakers, I'm just wondering how do we address that, that definition of confidentiality, knowing full well that once it gets out in the public, which it will, how do you keep it within the parameters that's set forth here, that it's in the same, is held in the same regard as confidentiality within a healthcare industry between doctor and patient in essence? If she would just yield to the question.
Hello? Oh, okay. Mr. Speaker, I yielded a question. So basically, on page three, we clearly stated that any information that's provided there is covered by HIPAA. The health information, protected by the health information is defined by the Health Insurance Portability Accountability Act, which has very strict consequences if the information here is used for any other purposes other than to provide the first responders, you know, with the information that was voluntarily provided by the participants. So confidentiality, if it's misuse, there will be very stringent consequences to this as under HIPAA. Furthermore, since we're talking about confidentiality, it was brought up earlier that any disclosure, and that line that was a matter of confusion, any other disclosure may occur only upon the written authorization of the registrant, and that word "other" is really not supposed to be there. What that is saying is that any information that is provided by the, by the person who is participating in this registry has to be, has to be given with a written authorization, that they will sign as they're providing the information in the registry, there will be a signature there that they are giving authorization to use the information for their, you know, to meet their needs in an emergency. So confidentiality, I don't know how much stricter we can be other than under D of page three.
And I appreciate that. Again, in terms of being strict on confidentiality, I guess the, the two facts that rub against each other is that, yes, there were strict parameters on the HIPAA. However, once the information is broadcast, and again, as noted by the previous speaker, it no longer is confidential, much like in an attorney-client confidential privilege, right? If it's heard by a third party, it no longer is confidential. And so I'm just wondering if that applies here as well. Once it's out there, then it's no longer confidential.
Well, do you want me to-
Please.
Okay. So actually, my understanding, as it was spoken about by the previous speaker, is that when there is an emergency that's occurring, and then the responders are dispatched, it's done over the radio. And he did note that, that this, that is heard by not only one, one emerg, you know, one ambulance or the emergency responder, but others who have access to that radio range. So there will be others who would, my understanding is that that's already occurring right now. And so when, when the, okay, when-
I'm not sure that's true, because there is no registry right now, Mr. Speaker.
Right. So when, when this occurs, our goal here, and how we envision this to ultimately be realized, is that it's not really through voice through which they will provide, be provided, information about that individual, would not be just through voice. Right now, all of us have ready access to information through our smartphone. We even transmit documents through our smartphone. And so we have instant messages that we can provide, and it's not necessarily through voice, and we have the choice through voice, but we can actually access the information through the smartphone. When this was brought to our attention, that we can use the smartphone, it wasn't generated by myself, it was actually provided to the roundtable participants by the deputy chief of the fire department, deputy chief of the fire department, who said, here is how it's done, through the national registry. Each one of the responders have a smartphone. Those who participate have a barcode, and they basically scan the barcode and the information will come up, and it's programmed that way, so that it's not through voice, but it's through something that is written. And he demonstrated that to us. So that's the ultimate goal that we actually would have realized, is that when there is an emergency, it's a matter of just getting, they would have ready access to that, it can be provided by the dispatcher, or the responders themselves can be, can access the information readily.
Mr. Speaker, please don't get me wrong, and my colleagues out here, I am not trying to poke holes for the sake of poking holes. The, here we are talking about this act that will establish this registry and list all the parameters, and then come to find out that we can't live, and then within these parameters, as it starts off, the confidentiality portion gives me the problem myself. And again, maybe there's a way to work around that issue, I haven't figured that one out yet, does cause a little discomfort. Confidential information is confidential information, you know, until, and I understand, you know, the scenario that the good author has explained, but again, that is more based upon just an explanation of a certain instance as opposed to what happens in the various situations that may present itself out there. So it may, so this provision may apply to the situation that she presented, however, it may not apply to all situations, and this is where we may run into some liability issues. Anyway, I believe that a lot of the issues that I have been talked about before, and I still say that some of them are still on the table, needs to be thought out a little bit more, but I'll, I'll thank you for the time, Mr. Speaker.
Senator Morrison, on the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Recently, we were, we were talking specifically about a previous bill that deals with the same fund, the E911 fund, and, and I came to grips to understanding some of my colleagues' concerns about protection, protecting that fund. And also, I also want to mention, Mr. Speaker, last turn with the request, by the request of the fire chief, we further provided legislation to protect this fund, and that's why we have this language in there, that the fund is exempt from any transfer authority. However, I, I understand the need for this registry, but again, we're going back to what we discussed earlier regarding the E911 fund, and there was mention of a little bit of the cost breakdown, the outreach, the costs that go through this. I just, and then my understanding too, from the public hearing, is that the DISIT, along working with the Office of Technology, would develop the RFP to go out for this services. So, and then when I'm reading the language here, on section five of page seven, it's that $150,000 is appropriated from the inappropriate fund balance of the enhanced 911 Emergency Reporting System Fund to the Guam Fire Department as a startup cost. So if it's going to the Guam Fire Department, and unless the author can correct me if things change, shouldn't the Guam Fire Department be issuing this RFP or going through this process of procurement?
Senator, you yield.
Yes, I yield. If I may ask, good speaker, which part here that has to do, when he was referencing the DISIT developing the RFP?
Right. It's, it was in the public hearing, when we were discussing with DISIT how we were going to go about, when the cost was brought up, associated to developing this registry, we're asking how we were going to proceed with this, and how can we get this registry growing to meet the January 1st, 2016 implementation date? And the DISIT director basically explained that they're in the process, working with the Office of Technology, to develop the RFP. So, and just asking, you could correct me if I'm wrong, that, or if that's changed, and I think this funding source is going to the inappropriate agency.
So in response to that, Mr. Speaker, that has changed since the public hearing, and that no longer is included here in the, that DISIT is developing the RFP. But the Guam Fire Department will be the one who is in charge of the registry, they will maintain it, but they will, they can also consult with DISIT and other agencies who provide the services.
I thank you, thanks for the response. Another question is, if the author may yield, is the, again, with the cost breakdown, and I know we had a little offline discussion, but it's good to put it on the record, so that as we worked very hard to put this language in to protect the fund, and as we worked very hard with 73 to still address the concerns to protect the fund, I want to make sure that we, the author could put on the record the discussion she had with the fire chief regarding, regarding this registry and his support for the funding source to go through this, so that, you know, if any questions that gets brought up in the future, that he lended his support for this initiative.
Do you wish to yield to that?
Yes, I yield to that comment and that question. So my chief of staff and I had actually met with the chief of the fire department, and that was last week. At that time, I had gone there to actually discuss the possibility of using the 911 funds, and of course, he was very protective of the funds, but he also did note that this was an important effort to, that would enhance the responders' ability to meet the needs of the people who are involved. He did also note to me yesterday on the record, based on an email or a message, because my understanding when I left- my understanding when I left there was that this bill is actually one that would be allowable based on the mandate for using the E-911 funds. However, yesterday, when the good senator from Maguilo had sent a text message, that support was qualified. And the chief had actually said that the support would only be there once the contract for the improvement of the 911 system has been realized. And so that's a progression of that support. So basically, at this point, as it stands right now, given that there isn't a contract yet for the improvement of the 911 system, he said as of yesterday, he can't support it. The use of the funds, that's...
Senator Morrison.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Thank you for the clarification. I also want to point to, also, I recall the $150,000 was also, what was going to also be built into the development of the RFP is a maintenance cost factor. We spoke about it earlier, what is going to cost in the prior, next, the prior years after. I just want to get clarification if the $150,000 would also have a built-in maintenance cost. We talked about outreach, we talked about the building of the registry, the database. And I don't, you know, in my experience annoying, seeing building regist, seeing registries being built and RFPs, I think it's what, you know, will be a lot less than this figure. So I'm assuming that this has a built-in maintenance program.
Senator, do you wish to yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I yield to the question. On page seven, section five, under appropriation, says the sum of up to $150,000 is appropriated from the unappropriated fund balance of the Enhanced 911 Emergency Reporting System Fund to the Guam Fire Department as a startup cost for the emergency online registry for individuals with special needs. The Guam Fire Department may request in their budget for every fiscal year thereafter the funds necessary to maintain and support the mandates of the emergency online registry for individuals with special needs. So the $150,000 is a startup. And subsequent to that, subsequent years for the maintenance would be, they can request. We have also noted in another section that, of this bill, and if you could just give me time to refer to it. Okay. In section four on page seven, the fire department may seek and apply for federal grants and/or other grants available for funding opportunities to support the mandates of the emergency online registry for individuals with special needs. And so it's a combination of both the appropriation, including it in their budget requests for the subsequent years, and also a combination of federal grants.
Does that address your issues?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. I just want to point out, I'm sure you recall the CJAC system, the criminal justice automated system, and the efforts that went into building that. And then at the end, we saw some of the challenges with regards to the cost of the maintenance of the program. And eventually, there was a built-in, after the fact, trying to build cost sharing through those agencies that contribute or to that system. So I just want to ensure that after we build this registry, there is some maintenance program behind this so that it does survive the test of time, just from experience, seeing what happened with the CJAC. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much for your questions. Any other senator wish to be heard? Any senators wish to be heard on the main motion? If not, the sponsor is invited to close.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. And I want to thank my colleagues for their input that had brought clarity, hopefully brought clarity to the intent of this bill and the bill itself. Mr. Speaker, I would like to remind us of an incident in 2008, when a young, 27-year-old man in our community was shot to death by a police officer. The media reports stated that he suffered a mental illness and was in need of medication. Had the police known of his condition at that time, the situation may have likely have been handled differently. And today, his family and we as a community would not have lost the life of Darson Rakimisik. Following that incident, Ngumakamami had come forth urging the first responder agencies to reevaluate the protocols and training when dealing with individuals with mental health issues. Although we did not have an emergency registry then, the hope and intention now is to clearly avoid those situations of not knowing.
Can we take the discussion outside, please?
Although we did not have an emergency registry then, the hope and intention now is to clearly avoid those situations of not knowing and develop the mechanisms needed to ensure the fair treatment and equal protection of all members of our community, especially those with special needs. Mr. Speaker, this bill is not designed to complicate the lives of first responders or delay the necessity of immediately attending to a dangerous or life-threatening situation. Instead, it is designed to empower first responders with information as they manage situations. These situations may last for extended periods of time and involve detaining individuals or administering emergency medical attention. Who amongst us would argue that less information in these situations is better? Who amongst us would argue that first responders don't want additional data? Who amongst us would argue that the reaction time or prudent course of action by first responders is made more difficult or cumbersome by knowing who they are dealing with? We are empowering first responders, Mr. Speakers, with the latest technology. Some states are even contemplating equipping every first responder with a camera. We do everything we can to make the first responder act with prudence, efficiency, and responsibility. When you have individuals who are under medication, who are mute, who are subject to panic attacks, who are mentally ill, who cannot hear, who have limited vision, a first responder is more than likely empowered to provide the best care possible by knowing this. Bill 7033 strives to protect the rights of individuals with disabilities towards fair treatment. On top of that, it empowers first responders in our community. I believe that this is what we want for our families and what we should do for our people. In all sincerity, I urge, I urge my fellow colleagues to join me in supporting this measure. Sidoos Masi, and thank you for this opportunity.
On the motion to send this to the voting pile. Senator Rodriguez, I believe we're with you on 48, is that correct?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I, Mr. Speaker, move to place Bill 48-33 as substituted by the Committee on Health and further substituted on the floor on third reading.
Is there a further substitution?
As further substituted on the floor, yes.
Okay. I think it's an accept...
Oh, yeah, to accept...
No objection.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Okay, thank you. So we accept it and now move it to the third?
You will make the motion. I'll accept the motion to move it to the third reading and give you an opportunity to speak.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Please, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Let me start off by this, viva Manamku, Mr. Speaker. We're celebrating our senior citizens and Manamku this month. And so it's just fitting that we move this legislation, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, what this does is allow the chief executive to be able to be flexible in the resources he has before him this fiscal year to help in opening up a new senior citizen center, the Village of Dededo. There is a very beautiful building, and probably most of you have been there, in the Machachi area. The Ilacan Association of Guam has built a multipurpose facility. This was used, it was their property, their land. The funds used were grants, were grants from the Guam Housing, from Guam Housing and from Gora. And so right now, what we're trying to do now is assist them in providing the resources to actually get this facility up to running a senior citizen center. We know that there is a, usually a waiting list at both the Dededo and the Stoolbo Centers. And so what this does now is just ensure that, it mandates that this, that proceeds be used to operate this facility. We've included here provisions that would ensure that this organization works out a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Public Health and Social Services, that they must adhere to the terms and conditions that the program has in operating such a center. And, you know, really, it's been my desire, Mr. Speaker, that our senior citizen centers, our senior centers are run by nonprofit organizations, just like it was in the past when Garp Spimo was running it. You know, I have nothing but praise, of course, now for our mayors who are running the senior centers. But I really believe that in the future, the course we should take is really having organizations like this, nonprofit organizations, be the one to operate the senior citizen centers. And so I ask my colleagues to please support me in this effort. And I'd like to also move now to include Senator Tina Munya Barnes as a co-sponsor of this legislation, Mr. Speaker.
On the motion to place Senator Munya Barnes as co-sponsor, there being no objection. Senator Munya Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak briefly and stand and rise in support of this Bill 48-33 COR. And I want to thank the good author for giving me the opportunity to be a part of this co-sponsorship. As you know, Mr. Speaker, as the author of this bill stated, this facility was built through the Guam Housing Urban Renewal Authority's collaboration with the nonprofit organization, the Ilacan Association of Guam. I must recognize the good senator, former senator, who worked very closely with our office, Senator Palacios, in working closely with the senior citizens and the Ilacan Association to truly realize this community facility for the use for this association. But more importantly, that one of their visions was to make sure that there was an opportunity for not just our youth, but youth and senior citizens, and given another place. As you know, Mr. Speaker, the author of the legislation also spoke about the waiting list and the need for our senior citizens, the waiting list for them to join the program, the Manamku program that exists in the different villages. And there are a lot of villages that have a waiting list. And I know of some of them who literally, because of their origin and where they've stayed, or have family members staying at this village, that had to apply to go, to join another senior citizen because they don't have availability of joining the senior citizen center where they're at. So I know for a fact that that waiting list is there. We keep trying, and this is one way of opening the opportunity. The Ilacan Association of Guam, as a nonprofit corporation, has been very, very accommodating and supporting the services for our Guam community as it relates to this facility that they have and just truly working closely with their mandates and opening this up for a senior citizen. I think it's a win for the community. I know that there's more than 45,000 village residents in the Village of Dededo. And, you know, the mayor works really hard to try and place a lot of her seniors in the programs that they exist, but the list is really long. And I just want to say that this is one good way of showing that support. And I rise in support of Bill 48-33. And again, thank the author for taking the step and rising to the occasion for helping our senior citizens and allowing for this senior citizen program service to exist. So again, viva Manamku. And thank you, Senator Rodriguez, for allowing me this opportunity to be a part of the sponsorship. And thank you, Speaker, for letting me speak. Sidoos Masi.
Thank you. Senator Brian McCready, any other senator after Senator McCready which should speak on the main motion? Senator Espaldón, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I just want to commend the author and rise in full support of this piece of legislation. It's kind of funny, two weeks ago, the, I guess, the lobbying team of this legislation came into my office, there were six of them, and they had thought that I didn't support the bill because I didn't sign off on the committee report. But then I told my good friend Dennis, hey, I didn't even receive the committee report. But I just wanted to, you know, to let them know that I support any type of measure that has to do with seniors. This is something that, when you talk about forward thinking and when you talk about an off-election year, we actually facilitate and make sure that we take care of the people that we promised that will always take care of. This legislation does it. And while I don't have anything to add, because I think this pretty much says it all in this legislation, I can really say that this will help that municipality. Because if you go out to the senior citizen center, it doesn't get any smaller, it continues to get bigger. And when you go there and you see the smiles on their faces and you see how happy they are, you know, it's rewarding to people like us that we can help them and we can send some resources their way. So I want to commend the author for fantastic legislation, and I want to rest assured the people, the seniors in Dededo, that this legislature is looking after them. And there are certain people in this legislature that deserve a lot of credit, and Senator Rodriguez is one of them. So thank you very much, and I hope that we all can support this bill.
Thank you very much. Senator Espaldón, no? Okay. Any other senator which should be heard on the motion? Senator Tom Attack.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I certainly, you know, support the intent of the bill. But I'm just kind of, the funding to be provided is to come from the available funds, from the general fund appropriation. Maybe the author can clarify that. Is there in fact available funds that just, you know, is not needed and can be reallocated? Or I just want to make sure that we're not raising expectations.
in putting this together, moving it forward. And so what this does, Mr. Speaker, is authorize the transfer, authorizing the governor to use his transfer authority to be able to move funds around. We've seen it done in the past. Just go back to our message and communications log, we see that funds are transferred from different areas. And so it's language here that really provides that authority and flexibility for the administration to be able to make it happen. And really, it's a very small, it's a drop in the bucket in what really we're asking here, to get the senior citizen up and running in the Village of Daredo.
Senator Attick, is that satisfactory? Any other senator wished to be heard on the main motion? On the main motion, the author is invited to close.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you to our colleagues for the discussion. And again, I ask their support in voting favorably for this legislation. I'd like to also add Senator Brent McCready as a co-sponsor to ensure that they know that he does support this.
On the, no objection to McCready being asked?
No objection.
And on the motion to send it to the voting file, there being no objection. Senator Espaldón, 77.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I move to place Bill number 77-33 as substituted by the committee into the third reading file and very briefly speak on it.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in the 29th Guam Legislature, in my first term, I was successful to get the support of this body to introduce into law the prison industries bill, which basically was set up so that the Department of Corrections would be able to establish prison industries so that it would be, provide a means for inmates to receive job training and skills development, to provide opportunities for their earning of wages, to be used to pay for restitution to victim of crimes, to pay for fines and court costs, and to also pay for any child or spousal support that they may have, and also to provide additional means for funding of certain recurring expenses at the Department of Corrections. That has been in place, it's come full circle. When I first came into this term, Mr. Speaker, I was definitely about to follow up on what the status of prison industries, where it stood, and to my delight, they actually, before I even called them, they came to my office and were very, the people at the Department of Corrections are very excited about really implementing and moving forward with prison industries and to making it a lot more expansive. What they did ask for, though, is perhaps a few tweaks, a few, a couple of tweaks, actually, and this is what this bill represents. The law, as it stands right now, provides for prison industries to be eligible only to inmates, and the director of the Department of Corrections has asked that detainees also be included in the program. Again, we know that over at DOC, there are 400-some-plus detainees. They're not inmates, they have not been through the court process yet, but they have been arrested and are up there. And so the director asked that detainees be included in prison industries so they also could avail themselves of using their time to generate new skills or skills development and job training, as well as perhaps keep themselves busy and productive while they're incarcerated. And so this bill covers that, would add detainees to the inmate population who can avail themselves to prison industries. The other part of the existing law that we wanted to amend would be to allow the money that is generated from prison industries. And if I may, very briefly, again, the money is, in the existing law, is split four different ways, 25% for, to be able to pay for restitution, 25% to be able to pay for court costs, 25% to be able to use for spousal support and child support, and 25% to be used by the inmate to be able to buy, excuse me, by the Department of Corrections, to be able to supply and provide for the inmates up there. And all they're asking for is that the funds also be used, that the available funds can be used for training of Department of Correction personnel for prison industry purposes. And that's the gist of this bill, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Espaldón. Just a couple of things, logistically.
Yes, ma'am.
On Bill 77, I just want to make sure with the clerk, did we do it as substituted by the committee?
As substituted by the committee, yes, ma'am.
Right, okay. And did we get that clerk, as substituted? And then also, on the substituted version, I'm looking at it right now, and we just needed to know what the...
Where the...
The amendments were, yeah, I don't see the strike-throughs and the underlines.
Yes.
Yeah, the amendments to the law.
I agree, Madam Speaker, and this is where I think we need to come together.
Yeah, you know what, I'm going to go ahead and take a minute recess because you've got an amendment, and it's on Section 2, am I right? Do you have that amendment with you?
I do not have an amendment on Section 2, but I will identify where the law is being amended. And it will be, the law is amended, again, it just came out of the committee without the underlines or, you know, and so on page 1, on line 6, after the word inmates, the addition to that would be and detainees, those two words.
Okay.
And then on page 2, at the very end, on line 14, after prison industries, the line and for training of Department of Corrections personnel, that is the addition to the existing law, Madam Speaker.
Right, and you have an amendment on Section 2? That breaks up at 425%?
No, ma'am, that is already, that is included in the law.
Okay, I'm just sorry.
I just want to explain.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Okay. On the main motion, Senator Brent McCready, you're recognized. Senator Brent? Yes, he's done.
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker, there is one place that I did miss that we did add, is on page 2, on line 8, after the word prisoners, the two words and detainees. Again, we just want to make sure that the detainees are included in prison.
So noted.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I'll have the clerk make sure those underlines are there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Brent McCready, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in full support of this piece of legislation, and although it's a small amendment to the law, I don't think we can no longer just turn a blind eye to Department of Corrections. It's not like it used to be where we had 22 years of really not addressing the issues there. And so although small, I think it builds up to something that we have to make sure we address every opportunity that we have. The Department of Corrections, Madam Speaker, is not getting any cheaper, and I know some of my colleagues may speak to this, we had a meeting this morning with one of the hired physicians that is now a team member of Department of Corrections and trying to get the healthcare portion of Corrections out of the consent decree. And we're looking at millions and millions of dollars in cost that we're going to have to incur through this fiscal year budget, that when you talk about prison industries, prison industries can help, we just have to make sure that we get it up and running. So without having public panic saying that the roof and the house and the sky is falling on the Department of Corrections, we have to piecemeal some of these mandates together to make sure that when we finally get out of the consent decree and we finally, one day, build a new facility, that all of these pieces of the puzzle that surround the Department of Corrections that can help with the resources are in place. And I think this bill addresses that situation, and of course, the good author is the one who also introduced the bill that would mandate the percentages of how much would go to prison industry, to the victims, to the Department of Corrections there, and so forth and so on. So I rise in full support, and I hope that, once again, that we don't look at Department of Corrections anymore as something that is not a juicy issue, it's a humongous issue on Guam today, and it's not going to go away unless the legislature and the other branches of government all come together and work towards one goal, and that is taking Department of Corrections out of the consent decree and then keeping it out. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I hope we can all come together and support this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator McCready. Anyone else wishing to speak on the motion? If not, Senator Espaldón, would you like to close or send it down to the voting file? Are there any objections to sending it down? If not, motion carries. I'm going to go ahead and, 77, right? 70 more? Hold on. One moment, Mr. Vice Speaker. I'll go ahead and recognize Mr. Vice Speaker on the Bill 79-33. Am I, yes?
Yes. Madam Speaker, I beg the indulgence of the body to accept Bill 79-33 as further substituted by the author on the floor.
Thank you. On that motion, does everybody have a copy? Are there any objections? No objection, motion carries. Please proceed, Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker, this bill was actually written for me by one of the agencies under my purview, the Attorney General's Office. This further substitution was necessitated by our realization that the code sections that we were trying to codify it into were probably inappropriate and would probably be better placed in the evidence code. And so that's why Section 1 of the bill states that notwithstanding the provision of law, the compiler of laws shall codify the provisions of this act within the Guam rules of evidence. As was substituted by the committee initially, it left it with code section numbers that might have been problematic, but all the words are still the same. It's just the numbers that were taken out, and we just then gave them simple numbers of Section 1, 2, 3, and 4, as opposed to code section numbers. There is one amendment that I would like to make, and that's at the bottom of page 1, force, it shouldn't read 163301C, it probably, it should correctly read 4C, as was rewritten by this, by my office.
I'm sorry.
On bottom of page 1...
Line 15.
Line 15, it says, "Section 163.30." It really should just read 4C, because that comes from the new 4C that's on the middle of page 2.
So we're moving to delete 163.30 and just put the number 4?
4C, yeah.
4C, okay. On that motion, and before I do that motion, just so that I get clarification again, we did move it to the third reading for discussion. Clerk, can you make sure that we get that? There was no objection? No objection, thank you, thank you, Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker...
Wait, one moment. On that motion, no objection? Motion carries, Vice Speaker, please.
The Attorney General had conducted a conference with victims' advocates, and they were complaining about the fact that they wanted to be able to meet with victims, but the victims were concerned about whether or not their discussions were going to be confidential. And so it was the decision at that conference to submit this piece of legislation, making parts of their, I mean, making their discussions with these advocates confidential. But I also want to point out to the body that though this is confidential, there are times when the advocate is going to be required to provide the information as requested, and that's going to be in the event that the, as we have it in C, the communication is not privileged if the crime victim advocate knows that the victim will give or has given perjured testimony or the communication contains exculpatory material. So we want to make sure that it's understood that if they told the advocate something different than what they're testifying to, the advocate can come out and testify. And so these were all recommendations. Madam Speaker, I'm hoping that the body will assist us in getting this through. Thank you. If I can be excused for a second.
We left off with Vice Speaker, I just want to clarify, because legal counsel brought up to me, just making sure that what we're speaking on is as substituted by the Committee on Guam U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, and as further substituted by the author on the floor. It just says as substituted by the author on the floor.
Yeah, I apologize.
So if we can put as further substituted on that, I guess, motion, no objection? Okay, now you can, we just got to make sure we take care.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I apologize. The conference that the Attorney General had brought together a whole bunch of victims' advocates, and they were talking about the fact that they wanted to be able to talk to the victims, but the victims were apprehensive about speaking to them about whatever they were victimized about, because they were concerned that there was no confidentiality. And prior to this legislation being considered, and if it wasn't, if it's not passed, there is no confidentiality. And so consequently, one can... but the victims were apprehensive about speaking to them about whatever—they were victimized about because they were concerned that there was no confidentiality. And prior to this legislation being considered, and if it—if it wasn't—if it's not passed, there is no confidentiality. And so consequently, one can be working at verve and some rape victim can come in and give you some information, and the defense attorney can call you in to testify about what—the person said. It might be something as innocuous as, "I lost my virginity at age thirteen," and that might come out at the—at the—at the trial. Those kinds of things have to remain confidential. The only time that it would not be confidential under this statute is if the—the victim had told the advisor—I mean, the—the advocate that it was a guy that stood six foot three and defendant that's standing there is five foot two. So the—the advocate come—in and say, "Under four C, there is no confidentiality because the information that was provided to me could be exculpatory." The difference between a six-three perpetrator and a five-two perpetrator is considerable, and so that might be exculpatory evidence. Or if the victim had said that it never really happened, but I'm just trying to get even with them. That kind of perjured testimony would not be confidential, and the advocate would have to be able—would—would be required to come forward with that information. And the attorney, knowing what that information, would have to then divulge it to defense counsel and—so that the defendant could have a—a trial that was—where all of his rights had been protected. Right? That's—that's on the top of Page 3, where communications between victim and advocate or any record notes and documents that the prosecutor or law enforcement agency shall disclose the material to the defendant's attorney only if information is exculpatory. All right? So I want to assure the defense counsel out there that there is no attempt to try to—to—to shield any information that might be exculpatory or that is perjured, and that this is just to assist in getting the advocates to work with the victims. Because, as you know, Madam Speaker, there aren't enough counselors out there that can help with these—these victims. And unfortunately, the—the number of it is just too great and it's growing faster than we can address. And not everybody is a psychiatrist who can claim the psychiatry or psychologist confidentiality. Some of—some individuals are just going to have to deal with—with—with victims' advocates, and in order to be able to them to start the healing process, they need to be able to know that there is some confidentiality. And so I'm asking, on behalf of the Attorney General who prepared this legislation, that this body support this bill and that we adopt it and provide a—a new privilege that, yes, has never been—is a new privilege, and that's for the victims' advocates. But I want, again, to assure the defense bar, anything that is perjured or exculpatory will not and cannot be considered confidential and has to be disclosed to opposing counsel and to the court.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Anybody on the main motion? If not, motion to put it down in the third reading file? Are there any objections? No objections. Motion carries. Next one on the agenda is Senator Mary Torres. She recognized Bill twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we place Bill number twenty-five dash thirty-three as amended by the Committee on Rules, Federal, Foreign, and Micronesian Affairs, Human and Natural Resources, Election Reform, and Capitol District. And if I may discuss the bill briefly?
Okay. I just want to make sure it says amended right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you on that motion. Please proceed.
Sis Massey. Bill number twenty-five dash thirty-three is an act to add a new Section thirty-one oh one point three to Article 1 of Chapter 3, Title 16, Guam Code Annotated, relative to enabling the registration of eligible voters incident to obtaining Guam motor vehicle driver's license or identification card. This bill is a very straightforward piece of legislation. What it is intended to do is to allow every person who is applying at the—at the Department of Revenue and Taxation for a Guam driver's license or who is renewing a driver's license or a Guam ID card to register to vote at the motor vehicle registration pursuant, of course, to all the laws regarding voter registration. What we're doing with this measure, Madam Speaker, is essentially providing another avenue for our voters to be able to participate in the election process. And we know that— we understand that voting is a foundation of our democracy, and we also understand that in—in—in recent years and in elections past, the percentage of our citizens who registered to vote and who are coming out in numbers was much higher. And statistics have shown that many of our young eligible voters are not registering to vote. So what—I've attempted to do with prior legislation was to make it easier for them to register to vote, giving them different avenues such as online voter registration. What this measure does is it—it allows for a person, young preferably, but everyone actually, who goes up and applies for a motor vehicle driver's license, to be able to also be afforded the opportunity on the spot to register to vote. And it also has another advantage where people who are registered—who are renewing their driver's licenses, who may have a change in address or residence, can also indicate their change of residency for the motor vehi—uh, for the voter registration rolls at the time as well. So it—it's a very simple measure, very practical measure, which aims to increase voter registration rates. And I think when you—when you think about the practicality of it as well, when you go to the motor vehicle—uh, Department of Motor Vehicles, all the pertinent information with regard to your residency, proof of residency, proof of citizenship, proof of identification, and birth date is all provided there. So it's—it's a good—there—there shouldn't be any question about—about voter fraud or anybody impersonating another individual because all the information—the pertinent information that would make you eligible to vote can be ascertained at the motor vehicle registration. So I—I rise and ask my colleagues to please consider this very practical piece of legislation. I think it's incumbent on us as legislators to make every effort to increase voter participation and to encourage more people to become part of this very critical democratic process and to exercise their fundamental right to vote. Sis Massey.
When permit to, Senator Torres. Anyone wishing to speak on the motion? Anyone wishing to speak on the motion? If not, motion to move it down to third reading. Senator Torres, are there any objections? If not, motion carries. Do apologize. Next on the agenda, on Bill sixty-one dash thirty-three as amended. Vice Speaker Cruz?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd ask to move Bill sixty-one dash thirty-three as amended by the Committee on Higher Education, Public Library, Culture, and Women's Affairs to the third reading file and after an opportunity to speak.
On that motion, without any objection, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank the Chair of the Committee for expediting the hearing on this—on this issue. Madam Speaker, during our first session, we handled a very important piece of legislation by one of our freshman senators on first-generation trust. And during that discussion, I noted that there was a provision that made application to that exclusive to American citizens and—and/or permanent residents. And so I made in a mo—a motion to amend that bill to include ARCOFA citizens because if we wanted them to be educated, we should do everything that we could to assist them. And that $500 that was being proposed in—in the first-generation bill would at least provide some assistance. After that session, Madam Speaker, I went back to the office and I went and I looked to see where this wording came from. And to my surprise, the wording actually comes from our statutes on all—and I'm saying all—all of our scholarships that we have through the University of Guam. And so Bill sixty-one dash thirty-three goes through all of the scholarship provisions that we've—that this legislature has created for the—uh, through the University of Guam, and adds to every section after—it says, "Shall be residents of Guam, the residents of the United States of America, or permanent resident aliens." I've added to all the sections, "Or a non-immigrant alien admitted under the Compact of Free Association between the United States and the Federated States of Micronesia, the Republic of the Marshall Islands, and the Republic of Bala." Madam Speaker, we have to accept a reality. In the last census, I think it says that the COFA citizens make up eighteen percent of our population. That's probably understated because where some of them live, we probably didn't go out and include them in the census. So just from what we have, we know that at least eighteen percent of the population of this island are COFA citizens. If we want them to be productive and constructive members of this community, we have to assist them in getting their education. And as you know, Madam Speaker, the fut—the future has it that without a bachelor's degree or some advanced degree, the chance of getting employed in anything that's going to provide for any kind of livable wage is going to require that you have a bachelor's degree. And so all I'm asking is that all of the COFA residents who have come to this island under the Compact of Free Association—and admittedly, maybe some of us may have concerns about the fact that we had nothing to do with that—but the thing is—is that, for better or worse, they're here, and we've got to make sure that we provide them the best education possible. And if—and if they—if they qualify—if they qualify, they should be able to get financial assistance. I've been trying to find—I understand that there was one young person at one of the public high schools who could have and should have received a merit scholarship but for the fact that she was a COFA citizen and not therefore eligible. That really is unconscionable. That young student was in the top five or top ten of the school—or six, depending on the size of—the population of the school, and should have been provided with that opportunity to get a—a merit scholarship to the university to assist and defray the cost. I'm hoping that that person wasn't deterred from getting their education and ended—in spite of not getting the assistance, went on for education—uh, further education because of the fact that they were such promising So this piece of legislation is only to provide that so that they can become productive citizens in our community. And not only in our community, Madam Speaker. I think it's im—it's imperative that the university prepare students to go back to their own communities. They may have—they may be here, and if I can use myself as an example, Madam Speaker, when I went to California to go to school as—as a high school student, I was qualified to get the California State Scholarship, and the California State Scholarship helped pay for my undergraduate expenses. I didn't stay in California. I decided to return home. And I'm hoping that I've made a contribution to—to—to this community. But as soon as I was finished with my education, I came home. And I'm hoping that the citizens that—the students that we educate through this program with—with financial assistance will not only consider being constructive, productive members of the community here on Guam, but even better, if they would decide that they would take their education, go back to their—their homeland, and make for a much better community, that would help. Because we know that the migration to Guam is because of the situation of they're not having a livable situation at home. But if we can take our—the—the ones that we educate at the university—and in the past, we've had presidents and practically every member of the—the—the Senate's in the—in all of the—the three countries were graduates of the University of Guam. If we could have more of them go back and try to improve the situation, they probably won't be in need for the migration. And the COFA is up for re-re-certification, three years, and it may not be. So we've got to help our neighbors improve their situation because in doing so, it'll also improve ours. And those that stay here can become productive, constructive members of the community. So I—I—I know that many people are really protective about the scholarship programs up there at the university, but they are—these COFA citizens are part of our community. They're counted in our census. They're going to be here, and we've got to make sure that we invest in them so that they can become productive and constructive members of this community to improve Guam. And maybe some of them might want to return to their homes and—and improve the situation there so that there wouldn't be a need for such a huge migration out. So I ask my colleagues to please assist in—in Bill sixty-sixty-one dash thirty-three. And I'd also ask that you, Madam Speaker, be named as the second co-sponsor—the first co-sponsor on this piece of legislation.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. On that motion, to put Senator Tina Muny Barnes as the second co-sponsor, if there are any objections? No objections. I do have—I did have my brother raise up his hand to speak on the main motion, and then Senator Frank Blas, and then Senator Morrison. Thank you.
Actually, I was going to object to that so that I could be the first co-sponsor in that piece of legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'll go ahead and accept that, provided I become—after this, I become the—the next one down the line, okay? I applaud the author of the—the legislation, the good—you know, the gentleman from P. I am embarrassed that, you know, the years before that was enabled, you know, that I didn't do this myself. And—I'm honored and I'm glad that he—that—that he had the foresight and the vision to be able to do it as well—to do it. I applaud that, and I support this legislation. You know, and—and maybe for some people that are watching and listening to this, they're—you—they're probably taking it back and saying, "What? Right, Blas?" And we're—we're missing—if—if that was the case, then we're missing the point here with regards to my whole passion. It had nothing to do with the citizens and what we're doing here. As a matter of fact, you know, they came here and they're here so that they can get—find better life. Granted, there may be some bad apples, but that's not the whole bushel. And this is one of the attempts and one of the opportunities to be able to do this, to be able to help them, to be able to obtain that education, that better way of life that they were searching for. And like the speakers— the vice speaker's right, and taking that—these experiences, taking that education, going and going back to—to—to—to their home islands and making life better theirs too as well. You know, a couple of months ago, I had the privilege of being able to work with a number of students from Chuk who helped with regard—who helped with the—with the typhoon relief efforts for their—for the islands that were devastated in Chuk and Yap State. for their, for the islands that were devastated in Chuk and Yap State. And many of the volunteers, again, like I said, were students from the Chuk and the Yap Islands, but were more importantly, they were university students. There were students attending university, there was one that was a psychology major, there were a couple of education majors, there was a business major, there was one that was looking into, in a health major. But you know, the common theme and the consistency and what all of them wanted to do was, is get the education, get the certification, and be able to go home, go back to their islands and make their islands better. They love Guam and they love the, and they appreciate the opportunities they're given. But their hearts and their soul was going, was going back home. And they were here to be able to get that knowledge, to gain that experience so that they can use and they can utilize it back in their home islands. And what this bill provides, Madam Speaker, is to avail them to the other opportunities to have so that they can continue with this education and they can gain this education. You know, right now, and I'm sure that a lot of the discussion has been on, okay, how do we get the, get back what was, what we've already spent, or what we are spending, or what we intend to spend? I think another looming issue that we, I mean, issue that is looming and that we've got to start to figure out is that, you know, in less than eight years from now, actually in 2023, when the compacts expire, then what? Because while the United States and other people don't want to have that conversation, we need to have that conversation, not just in an island, but as a community in the Pacific Islands of what we're going to be, what we're going to do when in eight years we're all on our own. So over the next eight years, with the passage of this bill, one of the things that we will do is provide these individuals with the opportunity to gain, gain the education, further their education, so that we don't have as large an impact eight years from now that we could have anticipated otherwise. So once again, I applaud the author of this legislation, I applaud the good senator from PD. At first time, when I first read the bill and I heard the bill was being, I says, "Okay, what's, what's the motive here?" There's no motive. It's giving our people, the people that live on our island, the opportunity to be able to make themselves better. And in return, in exchange, what that provides is a better island, a better region. And I think that's money well worth investing. So I want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for this opportunity to pride my testimony in support of this measure. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, Senator. Senator Tommy, Tommy Morrison on the motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of Bill 61. And I really, really appreciate the author's efforts on this. I was very disheartened, and I think many of us were disheartened, to see what took place with the served Guam Commission and the AmeriCorps program where we saw the individuals there, you know, really heartbroken. I know the value of the AmeriCorps program and what it could bring to these individuals, these students. And not only looking at the financial reward to allow them to obtain or enter college. And it just tells me, Madam Speaker, that they are looking for opportunity. They are looking for ways to enter the University of Guam, GCC, and looking at these avenues for some way of paying for their way through college. And of course, we saw that because of eligibility requirements, some of them had to be reevaluated, their situation. So I, I thank the author of providing this legislation for our, our brothers and sisters of Micronesia to have this avenue to seek higher education. I was in a situation, Madam Speaker, at the Contractors Licensing Board by a gentleman that was just recently graduated from the University of Guam. He's from Chuk. And he was, in the meantime, working towards his master's in criminal justice at the University of Guam. And he did not have any experience. He was applying for Contractors Licensing Board Investigator. And he was doing whatever he can, he was putting his resumes out there left to right, left to right. He was really trying to pay back what he owed in loans that he, he got to get himself through the University of Guam. What I saw, Madam Speaker, in this individual, and there's a lot like them, is that they're trying to seek opportunity to do better themselves right here on this island and to contribute back to our community. The individual did not have the experience, but what I saw, Madam Speaker, when I asked him what he was applying for, and no disregard for those who had the experience and, and were able to get through by all DOA standards to qualify to meet the interview process. Clearly, this, this individual, when you asked him the question, I've never seen it before, that when I asked him, "What are you applying for?", the question was, "What are you applying for?" I was blown away that word for word, word for word, he explained exactly what a Contractors License Board Investigator does, what his responsibilities, what his duties are. And it was a challenge for me because he did not have the experience compared to the rest that were trying to obtain the position. So I took a chance and, and gave him an opportunity. And I said, "I can train this guy, he knows what he's applying for." And go back to this legislation, Madam Speaker. I know these folks will take, uh, take, take an opportunity to, or have this opportunity again to the University of Guam or GCC. I'm sure they will know what they're going to do with their opportunities once they get out. And that's just one of many examples. But I share that story, Madam Speaker, because I, I really feel that, uh, what I saw, and I think we were all there, was really disheartening to see these individuals who are really striving to get ahead, right in the middle of the program, have to be released. So I thank the Vice Speaker and his efforts to, to provide another solution for these folks to continue their higher education. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Senator Muniyabans.
Jesus Massey, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak in rising support of 61-33COR. And I'd like to thank the good Vice Speaker for giving me the opportunity to be a part of his co-sponsorship. I thank my good brother Frank. But I want to share with you, Madam Speaker, that, a story that was told to us many years after. There was this representative working for the government trying to see that all the, he'd like to say that all the children in this Alto of Yap is a part of his nieces and nephews and wanted to see if he could have, if he could take these kids and give them a better education. And coming to Guam was that higher and better education. And he had approached then Governor Gutierrez, who was, I think, the Speaker of the House at that time, and asked if he could help assist in having these students come over. And the governor, I mean, the senator at that time said, "I already have three from the outer islands living at the house and a couple of them are the girls going to academy and, um, and I guess FT." And, but Mr. John Romell was so adamant about wanting to make sure that these kids, these students had had the opportunity for this better education. So the speaker turned around, Gutierrez, and looked at this man, and his name was Bill Muniyabans. He said, "I'll take them all." Even knowing that he had nine kids at the house still, plenty adopted nieces and nephews, and wanted to make sure that, that that education was provided. Knowing that when they came here, that they'd have to, that they'd have to depend on having room and board and everything taken care of, the sponsor who accepted them to come in. Having, looking into opportunities to apply for tuition assistance and grants of view was really, really difficult. And even sometimes looking at private grants out there or for scholarships, it was hard because they weren't US citizens or resident aliens. And, but it never stopped them. And, and my father continued to provide for these students. And then when he died in 1994, at that time, there was like seven boys and one girl who was staying at the house with us. They thought that they had to go back and they were getting ready to tell my mother goodbye. And my mother said, "Oh, no, you're going to continue to stay." But they said, "We understand that, you know, it's hard, resources are hard for you, and we'll just go back." And my, my mom said, "No, the opportunity is here, we will continue to work." Madam Speaker, to date, there continues to be a lot of, uh, of my Micronesian brothers staying with us. I think there's still seven at the house now. And they, for those who've graduated and moved on, there were several of them who went to the University of Guam, Guam Community College, have graduated and ventured into going to Hawaii to further their education, to get their masters. I do know that one is, is going to graduate school. And they want to come back home. But believe it or not, after they come back to their island, they also know that they call Guam their home. But even through those trials and tribulations, one of my Ulythian brothers said, "Don't worry, sis, I'll never give up. I'm almost done with school, and if I have to do it a little bit at a time, I'm going to do it." This legislation, Madam Speaker, is a vehicle to give them that opportunity so that they can further their education, so they can truly see the vision that their Uncle John saw, Uncle John Romell. But better yet, that their families have that opportunity to come to what they believe is the gem, the educational gem of the Pacific, which is the education system here, and they believe that that's the University of Guam and the Guam Community College. Adding this, Madam Speaker, would be such a blessing for them. And I know that they would truly appreciate it. And I just say, the good Speaker, Vice Speaker, um, thank you, thank you, thank you. This will definitely go a long way. And I'm very excited. I do want to go back, tell my Ulythian brothers and sisters that there are going to be possibilities of them having to be able to apply for more, to apply for not just private federal, I mean, private scholarships, but to go ahead and now look at this, if this were to pass and become law. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of Bill 61-33. And again, extend my thank yous to the Vice Speaker for, for doing this for them. Jesus Massey.
You're welcome. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak on the motion who have not spoken? Mr. Vice Speaker to close.
Thank you, I just wanted to thank my colleagues for their comments. And if my two colleagues would not be insulted by being the second, I mean, the second and third co-sponsors, I'd like to list Senator Blas and Senator Morrison as co-sponsors.
On the motion, hearing objections, so order. On the motion then to send 61, you want to close on this? Okay, 61-33 to the third reading file without any objections, so order. You can remain standing, Mr. Vice Speaker, you're recognized for Bill 65-33.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move the Bill 65-33, replace the third reading file.
And that's as introduced, or is it amended?
It's just as was introduced.
As introduced, okay, you may proceed.
Thank you very much. I think before I start, so I don't mess it up, if I could ask that Senator Blas be first co-sponsor on this one, since this was his area. And Senator Muniyabans would be the second one.
Get on that motion, hearing no objections, so order.
Madam Speaker, Bill 65 is a very simple bill. Currently in statute, there is a provision on the recruitment by the police for Chief of Police to recruit volunteer police officers. And all I'm adding is this phrase. "Nothing in this section shall prohibit the Chief of Police from recruiting a resident who is a non-immigrant alien admitted under the Compact of Free Association between the United States, Federated States of Micronesia, Republic of Palau, and the Republic of Palau, uh, Republic, the Marshall Islands, and Republic of Palau." Uh, that's in the first section, in the recruitment section, and in the authorization for full-time CVPR. Again, nothing, um, notwithstanding that they, these Kofa citizens would be eligible for being considered for these positions as full-time civilian volunteer police reserve officers. Madam Speaker, as the good senator from Barakata Heights had mentioned earlier, that, um, that, um, that it's surprising that the two of us would be the ones that spoke about Bill 61 and now Bill 65 as co-sponsors because there probably hasn't been a more outspoken person than the, than that, my brothers in trying to talk about trying to get Compact of Free Association reimbursement, compact reimbursement. But that's separate. We're just trying to get from the United States what they said they were going to provide to us. But in, in these two pieces of legislation, both of us are recognizing the fact that these Kofa citizens are now part of our community. They've migrated here under the Compact and they're here, and they can stay for as long as they want. What I'm proposing in Bill 65 is to utilize the best of the best of them to be role models. As the good senator from UMAC mentioned earlier, that with the, with the AmeriCorps students, there were, there were AmeriCorps students from Sanctuary that were out there doing outreach in Aggett and in Dedado, trying to convince their fellow brothers and sisters from their, their home islands that they shouldn't and should not need to be involved in crime. But because of some silly regulation, they were terminated. They were a great role model out there. Up at the GACS, the Guam Charter School, there were seven teachers aides who were terminated. How can we encourage kids to think about doing well in elementary school so that they can do well in middle school, so they can do well in high school in order to be able to go to college if we don't give them the role models? They, they, these were six students. They, they, these were six students who they could see were at the University of Guam. And they could say, I know that my, my cousins can get to the University of Guam. And these six students in the AmeriCorps program were terminated. All this piece of legislation, Bill 65 is trying to do, is to try to get or authorize the Chief of Police to, if he feels it's appropriate, and it's not mandating him to do it, it's just saying notwithstanding, nothing in this section will preclude him from hiring, or, or having them come on as civilian volunteers. But if we want to be able to go out and understand, and have people understand what's going on, or even for the police officer to be able to communicate with some citizens, wouldn't it be great if they had a ride-along, or a volunteer who spoke Chukis, who spoke Ulythian, who spoke Palauan, to be able to help diffuse the situation out there? That's all this bill is doing, is authorizing the Chief of Police to pick up as civilian volunteers, or recruit for his volunteer group, individuals from the Compact states, so that they can assist us in trying to bring down the crime situation, the crime situation on this island. And so I'm asking my colleagues to please assist us in trying to get good role models out there, people who the other Kofa citizens can see is wearing a blue uniform, even if it is cape, even if it is CVPR, whatever it is, but at least they know that they can be constructive, productive members of this community, and not be on the other side. And that we, as a community, are reaching out to them, and trying to include them in trying to assist in, in, in crime deterrence. As, as I had stated in my press release, wouldn't it be better if they were part of the crime fighting force rather than the criminal element? If we can get them as part of our crime fighters as opposed to being criminals? And that's all I'm asking in this bill, and I ask for my colleagues' support in giving the Chief of Police the authorization to be able to do that, to include them in his pool of people that he or she can, can hire. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Bloss.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Once again, I'd like to applaud the good gentleman from Petey Heights. I'm introducing this, this significant, what I consider to be a very significant piece of legislation. I want to thank him for the honor of being able to, to motion and, and the body approve that I be a co-sponsor to this. It's a great honor, because I truly support this measure. Again, once again, as, as the previous bill, you know, I'm a little embarrassed that, that it took this long, and, and that he was the first, I could have been the first, to be able to do this, but it's done. You know, you know, Madam Speaker, I tell you what, two names that come to mind, John Paties and JR Paul. Both gentlemen who, John Paties, great advocate for the Northwest Islands, you know, and in Chuk, JR Paul, from, from the main island, Moen, in the city, Village of Moen. Both gentlemen, over the last few months, more particularly with John, over the last, last couple of months, two men are very passionate, want what's best not just for themselves and their families, but for their community. Obviously, in my observation, they're very stalwarts in their community, very respected. In a couple of occasions, I've seen them stand and, and, and provide guidance to, to individuals that, from, from their islands, to lead them in the, to guide them in the right direction. And you know, both, you know, Alex says, you know what? These guys would make great cops, not just in their islands, but here. And, you know, prior to, and hopefully that this legislation does get unanimously voted by, by, by this body and signed by the governor. But up until that time, it's very unfortunate that we couldn't utilize their resources, their resources, or resources of gentlemen, ladies and women and gentlemen, similar to them, to be able to help to build our community. Speaking of women, you know, Kimmy Graham, currently studying at the University of Guam, psychology major, but very understandable and, and very articulate, not just in the English, but in the Chukis language, as is John and JR. That could be great assets. Matter of fact, once this legislation is passed and everything, these are the three individuals I'm going to call, and says, hey, guys, you know, and, and encourage the Chief of Police, and the Chief of Police says, this is something that's good, we're worth while, I'm going to encourage them to become members of the civilian volunteer police reserves. If not for the experience that they can gain, but for the, for the knowledge, and for what they can provide to our community, and to their community. And I, I venture to say that maybe in doing so, maybe there could be a greater understanding, a better understanding, and not as much of an issue, not as much of a problem, as is perceived to be, provided to other members of this, of the same community. But I appreciate and I acknowledge and I applaud the, the author, the good speaker, the good gentleman from Petey, for his foresight in being able to see that, yes, now this is the reality, and it's going to happen, and they're going to be here, many of them are going to be here for, for many ages to come. And unless we have individuals who are going to take up languages, and going to learn their languages, learn their customs, we're probably going to have that disconnect, that gap in being able to provide services for them. So I applaud, again, this legislation, applaud the effort. I'm honored to be a part of it. And I'm asking my colleagues, please, without any hesitation, I ask for their support in this bill as well. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Torres.
Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this Bill 65-33. One of the things that we've seen in our community is the need for greater diversity. We are a diverse community. And when we have a diversity in the representation on the police force, in services to our public, there is greater confidence in our community. And many of the previous speakers have spoken to the, the role models. Clearly, we need role models, but I think more than anything, we need to understand that we have full inclusion, that people can aspire to positions, that people can also look forward to having others that are, that are within the police force, either as, as a, as a full-fledged officer, or under the civilian volunteer reserve. But when you have people who understand your language, who understand your culture, who you can relate to, and you can trust that relate to you, there is a greater sense of order, there's a greater sense of responsibility, I think, on the part of the community. So to the great author of this, this measure, I applaud your forward thinking. I think we've, we are looking at many ways to, to reach out and aspire and inspire people, aspire to greater things and inspire people. But mostly, what this does is it speaks to diversity and inclusion, which I think is so critical in our community today. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, Vice Speaker, send it down. On the motion, then to send 65-33 to the third reading file without any objections, so order. Bill 83-33, Senator, 82-33, Senator Munya Barnes.
See to a small C, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if I may, move Bill number 82-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Municipal Affairs Tourism and Housing, Historic, Housing and Historic Preservation, to the third reading, and I promise to briefly speak on that.
You may proceed.
Jesus Mas, see that, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 82-33 is an act to appropriate funds from the fiscal year 2014 fund balance of the Tourist Attraction Fund for the payment of, of operation needs of the 2016 Festival of the Pacific Arts activities, and to fund overtime compensation for the Guam Police Department and the Department of Correction. I want to share with you that, according to the documentation obtained from the Department of Administration, the audited balance from the Tourist Attraction Fund for fiscal year 2014, that is unappropriated and unallocated, equates to four million. Bill number 82, Madam Speaker, seeks to appropriate this four million dollars in several ways. First, the two million dollars is to go to the Festival of the Pacific Arts. As we are all aware, FestPAC is less than one year away, I think it's down to 350-some days away. And we currently have only approximately 2.7 million of almost six million dollars necessary to fund the festival requirements. Madam Speaker, I want to share with you that 1.201, 011 is being appropriated from this measure to cover also overtime compensation for the Guam Police Department. And finally, Madam Speaker, 798,989 is being appropriated from this fund to cover overtime compensation for the Guam Department of Correction. The propose, of the, the purpose of the Tourist Attraction Fund, Madam Speakers, among other things, is to encourage and support local activities, programs, and development, which would enhance our beautiful island of Guam as an attractive tourist destination, and to encourage local and cultural activities for tourists and the general public's enjoyment. And I also want to note, Madam Speaker, that clearly, funding FestPAC fits squarely within the, this purpose, as does supporting programs that deal with safety and security for our local residents and tourists alike. Madam Speaker, as you know, we are both the committee members to this Festival of the Pacific Arts that will be happening from May 22, 2016, to June 4. We are anticipating over 27 countries to be here, almost 2,000 participants, and maybe eyeing close to 10,000 tourists to come and visit as we showcase Guam to the rest of the Pacific nations and the world. I've always said that, hearing, as a young lady, though the waters separate us as, as islands and countries, it's our traditions and our cultures and our similarities of that that continue to bind us together as one. And I want to share with you that as we host the, what I would like to say is the Olympics for the Festival of the Arts, this is going to be the first time that Guam would host this. And the participation, like we did in 1999, when we really did shine, when we did the South Pacific Games, and had almost the same amount of countries with a little bit more, maybe close to 3,000 or 5,000 athletes come and compete in the South Pacific Games, which is, I like, like I like to say, is the Olympics for the Southern, I mean, for the Pacific region. This event, Madam Speaker, is going to be really big. You and I, and, and several of our colleagues in here who are part of the committee membership, I know the good Senator Mary Torres, I know that the former minority leader is still going to be actively involved, Senator Ada, also Senator Frank Uggan, and the Vice Speaker, who was very instrumental in being a part of the beginning stages of the committee with the Festival of the Arts. This is big. This is very, very big. And we've got to be able to, to showcase Guam to the rest of the world. We asked for this hosting back in 2008. We did a lot of hard work as a Team Guam, as one government, to be able to, to host this show. And I think that with the funding that is going to be provided, that we will definitely put on a great festival. Madam Speaker, also, as we look at trying to close the chapter, working closely with the Guam Police Department and the Department of Corrections, based on, on closing the amounts needed to pay the, the officers their due compensation, this is one way of helping out. So I hope my, my colleagues will help me in this effort. I've been working closely with the administration. I'd like to thank Senator Tony Bloss, former Senator Tony Bloss, for literally working closely and helping try to close the numbers out, and make sure that we, the numbers are intact, and know that, that this is a good thing for us. So I ask that my colleagues help me support this Bill 82, and, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this measure. Jesus Mas.
You're welcome. On the motion, Senator Tom Adat, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, you know, I certainly rise in support of the activities to be funded. And I, I was reading the committee report, and, and certainly the FestPAC activity, you know, the funding of the overtime compensation, I, I certainly have no problems with that. However, I do have a couple of questions, actually, I have three questions, if the author would yield.
I'm sorry, Senator, can you, both of us were distracted.
I have several questions.
Yes, can you repeat the question, so the Senator then will be able to hear it?
So I have several questions, if the author would yield.
Okay.
First of all, part of the funding, part of this re, funding, from the four million dollars, is to fund the, the overtime for GPD and the Department of Corrections to satisfy. Now, I just want to know, is this amount that's being appropriated for the overtime, is this going to take care of outstanding? I mean, what's in the past, overtime plus interest? Because it seems that every time we, you know, we come, every time we come back, it's like, oh, here we go, we found some more overtime. So maybe if I can just hear from the author on that matter.
Senator, do you yield to the question?
Madam Speaker, yes, I will yield to that question. And working closely with the Director of Department of Administration, former Senator Bloss, he, he was the one to of Department of Administration, former Senator Blas, he was the one who set down the numbers to me based on what's existing today. Could I answer the question, would this suffice and satisfy everything? If I'm not mistaken, I'm not, I'm not sure, because I do know that there was, there is an existing case with the judicial system that may come to play, but as it exists today, this is it. I've asked that question over and over. We've been at this, I don't know how many times, in our efforts to help and try to put closure to this. This was the number that was given to me by the Department of Administration, and I know it's in the committee report, and you can just give me a second, I can point it out.
Well, I know that the Department of Administration Director indicated an amount for the Guam Police Department and the Department of Corrections. Now, you meant, the author mentioned that there's an outstanding case, I guess, with the judiciary, but in the case, for purposes of this bill, this is to fund the overtime compensation. But to fund the overtime compensation up to what point? As of what hasn't been paid as of, I don't know, May of 2015?
Madam Speaker, if I may, it would be the day that Senator Blas submitted the letter to me, that that was the number that was given to us by them. But if you're asking me if that question, if that amount could change, I would further clarify and ask them, because I do know that there may be still an existing case and maybe of the oversight, or somebody who's in the Committee of Public Safety and Law Enforcement can help me.
Okay, thank you.
This has been an ongoing thing.
Thank you. So I guess the way it reads right now is that we're allocating 1.2 million dollars to the Guam Police Department for overtime compensation. So that could be overtime compensation that they haven't been paid, haven't been able to fund up to today, or for the remainder of the fiscal year, as opposed to, if, you know, if I understand correctly, we're trying to liquidate some of this outstanding liability. And so my question basically is, we've identified that up to January of 2015, this is, we have 1.2 million dollars in overtime compensation that's outstanding and needs to be paid now, and that includes the interests that have been accrued. So otherwise, the way it reads is that, you know, really, this 1.2 million can be used for the remainder of the fiscal year, and the same thing for the Department of Corrections. And is that the intent?
Madam Speaker, the way I understood it, and I'm only human, it was just, it was for the outstanding balances that exist as of when they gave me the numbers. And that's, and that's the amount that the Director of Department of Administration shared with me.
But you see, Madam Speaker, it doesn't say for the outstanding. I mean, it's, the way it reads right now is that I can be...
No letters from DOC or GPD?
I, Madam Speaker, if I may, a letter of May 13 was sent my way from the Director It was just to pay the outstanding overtime payments.
I guess it would be helpful, Madam Speaker, is if we, you know, at the time that this information was provided, that the outstanding amount, this 1.2 million dollars, for example, for GPD, was for the amount that's outstanding up to January 2015, which then will at least give us a heads up that there's more coming, there's still, the accountants are still, you know, doing their calculations and whatnot. So I just, it just seems that this overtime issue is a recurring issue. Every time that we've had the oversight hearing on GPD, you know, it's okay, where's the information? Well, we're still counting it up, so I'm just concerned. And quite frankly, then, the way it's written right now is that, is that these funds can be used for overtime for the remainder of the fiscal year, because what it says in the committee report, you know, I mean, it's what the bill says that it's available for that purpose. Okay, so the second, the second question that I have, Madam Speaker, is we're setting aside $2 million, and I guess we're starting to kind of build up that treasure chest for the FestPAC, which, again, you know, I support, I support that bringing that cultural event here. The concern that I have is we're going to set aside $2 million. Now, does this go into a lockbox so that it's available specifically for FestPAC-related activities and it's not subject to transfer? Maybe that can be clarified.
Senator, do you...
Yes, Madam Speaker, I will. Yes, Senator Ada, it will be set aside, and it is a special fund called the 2016, 2016 FestPAC account, and what happens there, Madam Speaker, is those, the form of acquiring the funds, to get the funds, to expend the funds, was to be able to draw down based on applications, financial applications to be submitted to the FestPAC fund, which is going to be, it's held with Kaha. And it is a separate and apart, a special fund that was created through statute, and what happens is FestPAC will down, draw down based on the need and based on the expenditures that have been, I guess, appropriate, I mean, not appropriated, have been projected to come. So we've been meeting monthly, right? We've been meeting monthly, and based on the position changes on several of the committee members' chairmanships that were changed, they were, there's a readjustment of what the full financial figure will be, but it's going to cost Guam over a little bit, 13 million is what they're projecting right now for that. We have 2.7...
You're giving him more information than he's asked for.
Thank you.
So, yes, there is a...
So, Madam Speaker, I have the same, you know, similar concerns I have with the overtime funds. It just says $2 million, and of course, the author indicated that, yes, it's going to go into some trust fund or whatever, but it doesn't say that in the bill. It just says that we're going to allocate $2 million to fund various activities of the 2016 FestPAC, but it doesn't give that assurance that that's where it's going to go. It's going to go into that FestPAC account, that special account that the author was making reference to. So I, because of that, you know, unfortunately, despite the fact that I truly support, you know, the FestPAC, and I truly want to see the overtime that's outstanding paid, the bill doesn't say that. And I want to make sure that we're trying to, are we trying to make good on what's outstanding, or are we just trying to add to the overtime pool? And so I have real concerns about that. The third concern that I have, Madam Speaker, is that I, as I was looking through the committee report, the Director of the Department of Administration gave a report at that time that there was $4 million of un, how did he put it?
Unallocated balance.
Unallocated, in other words, there's money available, $4 million, and out of that, what we want to fund comes out to $4 million. Therefore, that leaves, the way I would read that then, is that therefore, there, once we make these appropriations, there will be zero balance of funds in FY 2014. Now, I only bring this up because although I know we're not supposed to talk about any other bills other than what we're talking about, but we got another bill that's coming up that's also going to appropriate from unappropriated balance of 2014, and that one's asking for $3.5 million. So I didn't see anything in the committee report for that bill saying that there was an additional $3.5 million. So I only bring that up now because we've got to decide, what do we want to fund with, at least to my understanding from the committee reports, is that there's only $4 million of available unappropriated funds from the hotel occupancy tax. Do we want it for the FestPAC? Do we want to fund the overtime? Do we want to fund? I don't know.
Madam Speaker, point of information?
I'm not finished yet, I still got the floor, thank you. So we need to decide what it is that we want to fund so that, you know, we don't send this down to the voting file and then find out that, oops, you're right. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and just as a point of information, yes, there is two separate funds.
Yes, Senator Ada?
Yeah, that was the...
Wait, wait, with the...
That was the information I was going to, the point of information I was going to give is that Bill eighty-two is the Tourist Attraction Fund, and Bill eighty-three was the hot, the hot surpise.
Oh, Madam Speaker, then, in that other bill, then, in that other bill, there is not, in the committee report, there is not a similar testimony given by the Department of Administration Director saying, this is how much is available?
I mean, the hot bond, guys, you got everywhere, is the hotel occupancy tax, that's when you said it comes out to hot. Okay. You're right. Okay. So, Senator Ada, you're not, I'm sorry, I assume you're not going to be making an amendment then, where you said you want, you were thinking of the 2 million to go into that specific trust fund that you had asked that was set aside?
Well, Madam, Madam Speaker, I would prefer to leave that to the author, and, you know, to put me in that comfort zone, otherwise, I think it'd be best left for the author to do that.
Okay. On the motion? The motion eighty-two, the main motion. There's been no amendment or anything, so it's the main motion. Senator Spalding.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'm not sure who I should direct as question two, and perhaps I can look to you for guidance. Over the past two terms, I have had the privilege to be legal counsel here for the minority here in the legislature, and I recall a measure similar to this, I mean, not, in terms of appropriating unappropriated funds to several different entities. And I remember back then, I believe it was, in fact, I know it was a late speaker, Ben Panglinen, who raised an objection that procedurally, that's not how it should be done. In other words, according to the rules of the House, each bill should be single-subject. This particular bill has three subjects. And maybe perhaps I'll ask, I mean, it seems like the author of the bill wants to address this situation, and again, I raise this point for matter consistency in terms of how we proceed in our legislative proceedings, because there are many other issues that I have noticed, not only in this session, but in previous sessions that we've had in the 33rd Guam Legislature, where we're not exactly in conformance with our rules, just how our bills are being put out on the table. Some of the bills have come out with no underscore or have no deletions and things like that. And again, it's made it a little bit difficult to understand where the additions or where the amendments were made to existing laws. On top of it, in this situation, again, just need a little clarity, are we now allowed to go down this road of putting more than one subject on one bill at a time? At the time that Senator, Speaker Panglinen objected, I believe it was you, Madam Speaker, it was your bill, who had to, was, who was then forced to separate the appropriations into three separate bills. And again, I just want to, for clarity's sake, is that required here, or are we going down a different path?
My understanding, Senator, you're right, it's supposed to be a one-subject matter, but you also know is that it takes eight. That's the bottom line.
But, Madam Speaker, if I may?
Yes.
As Oversight Chair of Tourism and knowing that the Tourist Attraction Fund, based on our standing rules, is separate and apart from everything else, the jurisdiction to fund, to make the appropriations from this account comes with, and this is all under the purview of the Tourist Attraction Fund under the oversight. And yes, we have done this before, and you can shake your head, but we've done...
I know, that's where, I'm sorry, that only in a regular budget bill, where there are then various items that can be placed, but all other bills is a single-subject matter.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And again, I'm not trying to throw this off kilter, I just want to make sure that if we're going to proceed from here on in, in terms of following certain procedures, then let's establish it. Again, because I've seen some discrepancies just over the past several sessions, that we've kind of gone off the rules and, again, with no motion, notwithstanding the House rules, to go down that road. However, again, I remember that back then, legal counsel, legislative legal counsel did advise this body that, yes, something like this requires a single bill for each transaction.
My understanding is that when the bill was reviewed, legal counsel did advise that it be done three separate bills, but that wasn't done, and here we are.
So I realize that now I look to you or perhaps legal counsel on what is the proper course to go down this way. I don't necessarily want to object to the appropriations that are being made, but again, this is procedural in nature. Once we start going down this road and start deviating from our normal course of procedure or our understood course of procedure, then that becomes, that just kind of tells me that everything's fair game, and I think that might be kind of a dangerous road to go down, Madam Speaker. I mean, when we start talking transparency, when we start talking, you know, elevating the status of our legislature so that we do have accountability to our constituents out there, at least everybody's on the same page in terms of what are the rules and what are the procedures that we follow here in the legislature, I think that's important. It's much like any law that we have on Guam. We can't, if the law is in the books, we can't deviate from the law and say, yeah, this time only. It's law. Until that law is changed, it's law. And again, it's procedural in nature, it has nothing to do with the substance of this bill, but it has more to do with, again, how we operate. And so I look to you, Madam Speaker, to advise us on how it'd go. I realize you did mention that legal counsel did inform the good author about this possibility, and I know that the subject matters contained in this, if they were divided into three separate bills, could actually work off the same committee report, and so there was no harm in that, and that's all I'm asking for at this point, Madam Speaker.
And you are correct.
Thank you.
Because my bill was an example of that, and the same committee report was used then to individually introduce separate bills on each subject matter using the same committee report.
So at this time, Madam Speaker, if I may, and again, give, perhaps if we take a recess, because I would like to have this reported out in this, in this session so we can vote on it, but in proper form. And I know that this can be done very quickly in... And I know that this can be done very quickly, and perhaps overnight, and we could probably address this first thing in the morning, knowing full well what's coming down the road. It's going to be the same subject matter with the same items in it, just in the proper form. And I think that's essential, Madam Speaker.
We're going to take a recess. The legislature is back in session. I understand that, you know, based on the previous discussion with Senator Spalding, that we will then go ahead and recess for a bifurcation, I guess, of the other items in 82 and 83, and we will come in tomorrow morning at 9:00. Okay? So we are at recess.